This is the Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, April eleventh, twenty twenty four. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and Governor Healy's March twenty nine, twenty twenty three revised order extending remote participation. By all members in any meeting of a public body, this meeting of the planning board will be conducted both in person and via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with the right and a requirement to attend the meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public and committee members may attend the meeting in person or may attend remotely by following the instructions on this agenda. For those who are not in person, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by a technological means. In addition, pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty A, Section twenty F, after notifying the chair of a public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body. Or may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair. The listings of agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Lastly, per Section two forty one, one of the town code, except for procedural and housekeeping matters, town residents shall have the right to address a board on any item that requires a vote at a time before a board votes on that item. Such residents will be allowed as much time as a proponent of an item is permitted to have. And we are recording. Is anyone else recording? Nobody else is recording? Okay, great. So we'll get on with the agenda. So first up, Form A. You're here for Form A?
Yes.
Okay, come on.
My name is Jim Seidel. I'm the surveyor for SK Design Group in Pittsfield. And I'm representing Elizabeth McColey with the Form A. For her property located at four oh nine North Plain Road in Musitanic, Great Barrington. The property is located on the west side of North Plain Road or Route forty one, approximately two hundred and nine feet south of Rachel's Way. I did highlight some prints here. With this table. But. Currently, this is the existing condition of our property. It's a large lot. Located adjacent to Harton there on Route forty one or North Plain Road. The yellow shows the existing lot configuration. And here is the proposed condition. We're proposing a lot designated as Lot Number One. Highlighted in blue on this plan. It falls within the R one A zone. And it meets the zoning requirements over in my area of width. The setback works to the garage there. It's supposed to be twenty foot side yard setback. It's got forty three and a half feet.
And so the the current lot is five point three acres, sorry?
Four point six plus four point seven.
I thought that was the remaining land.
The remaining land is four point six.
Right, so the entire parcel is five, because you, right?
Right.
Five point three two eight plus minus, okay?
Yeah.
And you're pulling three quarters of an acre out of it?
Correct.
And you're cross checking the zoning?
Zoning is ten thousand.
Ten thousand square feet for the R one A?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hundred foot width.
Any questions? Pedro? Chad?
Looks pretty straightforward.
Malcolm?
No.
Jeremy?
Nope.
Move to yours.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? On favor? Aye. Okay.
Thank you. I have the mile hour of the prints.
Yeah, if you have a sharpie, we'll sign it now.
Do you have a package to work to? Should I just?
Yeah.
All right, nice.
Chris, do you, are you okay with the hygienic closet? Or do you?
Well, I have.
Yeah.
I also invented the TV of the GIS by, I'm not sure. I know some old technologies.
I'm trying to bowl. And I can, we sent you the PDF, so. Is that open? It can work in there, isn't it? Oh, okay. Yeah.
Is there any good audio? Do you guys wanna?
I was actually watching it, and so I didn't realize. We lost another one.
I don't see it at the time. Are you okay if I put the date on it?
Get, so Chris needs to give one here.
Would you like a roll?
There we go.
We need another folded one. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. It's a part, yeah, I had to look for it too. Jim, are you also here for the other part? Okay. For the next one, so Form A for four hundred Stockbridge Road.
Yeah, my name is Jim Seidel, surveyor for SK Design Group. And I'm representing Shimon G Incorporated for not being shown with this Form A that's located on four hundred Stockbridge Road in Great Barrington. The property is located on the east side of Stockbridge Road and Route seven, offhand on the north side of Christie Road. I did the same thing with the existing and proposed conditions there. This is the common lot. It's the yellow highlighting the perimeter of the lot. It's the Travelodge building at the corner of Stockbridge Road and Christie Road. And what we're proposing to do is add Lot One. Which has frontage on Christie Road and is shown highlighted in blue. The purpose of this lot is to build a house for the manager of the Travelodge building. Great. Let's see, it falls within the B two zone. And that lot also meets the requirements for area width.
What is it, fifty feet and five thousand square feet?
Yes, it's five thousand square feet of area is required and fifty foot long width. There's a side setback of ten feet. We have thirty three point seven feet to the existing Travelodge building.
Is there adequate space within the setback to put a structure?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
I plotted a house for on them.
Okay, it just, it's got that elongated dimension, it's something.
Yeah. Okay. The setback backs are not extreme. Yes, it's twenty five foot, ten foot side in here.
Ten foot for the room?
Yeah, so really is plenty of room there.
I'll move to yours.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second by Malcolm. Any discussion? On favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Which is.
Is that still a group day? Do we offer the quantity discount?
Yeah.
Ten percent off the second.
Jim, I'm sorry, did you leave the show up there? That I dropped. You're giving this to her?
Yeah, those are not needed.
Have you watched any roles again?
I think you have two of these, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I feel like I'm still hearing under. Are you also the castling?
No.
No. He's on Zoom. Okay, super. All right, we'll get to him in just a second.
Sure.
And we'll invite you to take these nice colored maps back. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Anybody want? Can you pass that down? Once Jeremy gets the second Form A over to Chris, then we'll start with our third Form A for eighteen. Sorry. Eighteen Kathleen.
Presenters too.
Hi, John.
Hi, can you hear me?
If we can, please go ahead.
Uh, this is a Form A for Matt Nathaniel Golpin. Basically, he's taking, he owns these two lots. And he wants to take Parcel A off of the one, one of the lots and combine it with the other lot. So he's left with, the original lot was about one point two acres and now he's gonna have one acre. And the other lot was existing at nineteen thousand square feet. Now he's gonna add the eight thousand eight hundred sixty five square feet to it. We're not creating buildable lots or anything.
We're not creating.
So Lot One is adding Parcel A?
No.
So I'm sorry, okay.
Lot One is remaining land, basically.
Okay. And, okay.
And so neither of these has.
Yeah.
It's a frontage.
Yeah.
If they're existing, so this isn't, this isn't. A subdivision because.
Could, is it a different kind of Form A? Because it's not a zoning compliant lot, or is it? C note four.
Well, there are two existing houses, so.
Yeah.
We're not gonna take away that, right? So if you just wanna transfer that to that, I don't know why that would be a problem.
It's just a lot line change.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is a weird space in Great Barrington, isn't it? Yes.
Yeah, after you.
Um, so do we have a motion to endorse?
So, second.
Okay, thank you, Donaldson and Malcolm. Have you got any discussions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. We do, it's under there. Yeah, I see it right here. All right, thank you, John.
Great, thank you.
Pick the mile hour up maybe on my own.
This is that area. Sort of known as Pigman. Okay.
So this one.
Ultimately, although this is just creating parcel.
Oh, it's creating.
Yeah. I already filled in. You can just reflect on that one night. Thank you. Do you want me to put it in the recycling here? Just keep giving it, I'll put it in the recycle bin. Unless you want it. All right. This time it goes fine. All right, can we move on to the minutes of March twenty eight, twenty eighth? Do we have a motion to approve his amendment?
So moved, second.
Thank you. Do you have any discussion on the minute? Hearing no discussion, all in favor? Aye. All right. We'll move on to Skype Plan Review for three twenty, Maple Ash. Is anyone here for that?
That will be continued. They have not finished their special permit process with the select board.
Okay.
They won't be back with the select board until the end of May. But, sorry, the end of April. So you, you won't see them until early May at the, at the.
All right, we will move on then to Town Planner's Report whenever you're ready. If you need a minute, let us know.
Uh, what I have for you tonight is, as I mentioned last time, staff is reviewing these townwide. Make sure that what we are actually charging for applications are covering the costs of our work. As I briefed you in my memo. There are a few. Application fees that, applications that come before this board that. We are recommending be increased, special permits, which are three hundred now. And in order to cover the, all the costs of the required advertising, mailings. And staff time, we'll likely increase all special permits to three hundred and fifty. So that's from three hundred to three fifty. Site plan review increased from seventy five, which was what you said it in twenty eleven. So it hasn't been changed since then to one hundred. Common driveways were changed since twenty ten. From fifty to one fifty.
So question about that. If we're charging a hundred dollars for site plan review, which is more complicated than a common driveway, why are we charging more for a common driveway?
Common driveway almost always includes county council's time. Where a site plan review. Subdivisions. For Form A, we will not require it from one twenty five, which it has been since at least two thousand eight, if not before then. One twenty five to two hundred.
What are the costs associated with that?
The costs are primarily time, coordination, and ensuring that all the GIS maps are up to date. So it's my office and the assessor's office, making sure the records and whatnot.
So you actually do the amendment to the GIS? Who does that?
Uh, we actually farm that out to our assessing software and GIS mapping. We ensure that all of the parcel data, the, the property record card ties to a physical map. Ties to a lot number, and they all get tied together geographically online.
And we have.
And we have to pay the consultant to do that as well.
Is that, that's an annual maintenance contract that we have with them, or is it a?
Yeah. Something like that. The specifics of that.
Okay.
For a Form B preliminary plan, the current charge is one fifty plus fifty per lot or per average daily traffic increment of ten. And we're proposing to increase that to two fifty plus fifty per lot. As we get into preliminary plans and definitive plans, there are required advertising costs and notice, noticing costs and things like that. So there's, there's certainly costs in town. For a preliminary plan. And similarly, for a definitive plan, which currently is a five hundred dollar fee. Plus one hundred per lot or per average daily traffic of ten. Increasing that to five hundred. Decreased.
Oh, that, that's. That's a decrease.
Yeah, I must have missed that.
Do you wanna leave it as five hundred plus one hundred?
Five hundred plus one hundred would, so would cover those, those costs.
You've got it in the narrative.
Change or suggestion? I think there would be no change there. The costs are the advertising, the notices, council's time, assessors and GIS time.
Are you looking to reduce the per lot?
No, I'm not, that's a, that's. Should be five hundred plus one hundred.
I mean, is there additional costs associated with the per lot?
Oh, two twenty five, that's okay.
Is there additional?
Yeah, in, in other words, why are we charging on a per lot basis?
Is there, I, I, I don't know. That's just the standard that's in your subdivision rules and regulations. I suppose more lots mean more work.
Yeah, more review, making sure each lot is served adequately. Okay.
So definitive plan would, would basically stay the same?
Yeah. So these are just the outlines of my thoughts, which I promised to you. The process for changing fees is. Generally, you can do it as part of your review of your own planning board rules and regulations of how you do business. You can just do that at a post a public meeting. Subdivision, however, requires a subdivision public hearing. It's an actual, you know, hosting it, advertising it, having a public hearing. So that'll take a little bit more time to queue up into your agenda.
Who's gonna pay for that?
Maybe we should go up to six.
With special permits, obviously, we would hope that the special permit fees for this board, for the select board. And for the ZDA are all the same.
Yes.
So they'll be presented with the same information. So my hope is that at a May meeting, we can schedule this for an actual review and vote. As well as have your subdivision public hearing to review your subdivision rules rights.
With regard to the special permit, since there are multiple boards that may issue that, are you or have you already gone to those boards with this recommendation?
I have not.
Okay, do you intend to do that before May?
Yeah.
Okay, and the objective would be to have everybody vote on the same amount. We don't want select.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
All right, I don't see a problem with that.
Generally, within the same. Time frame.
So, I mean.
So we can change the subdivision. Rules, regulations, just at a meeting.
No, subdivision rules and regulations must go through a public hearing process.
Public hearing, really? Okay.
Yeah.
So in turn, oh, go ahead.
Chris, are there, is there any staff engages in administrative work or the review that are on, on an hourly basis? Or are you looking to hire more staff?
No, the staff that's involved are all salaried. Is there a question?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking that. As I read this, the, the staff review portion. Of it seems somewhat irrelevant because that's, they're doing work that they're hired to do and they're getting paid salary for it. And I think I. What I'm looking for really are more direct costs that are increasing, that justify the fee increases.
Uh, the, the biggest direct cost that's increasing is, is postage. It's been increasing every year. And our postage budget takes a hit every year. Postage mailing and the, the time it takes to do. And a butters notice that has fifty butters is, is, you know, part of that.
So you mentioned that there are other subcontractors as well that. That are engaged in all these activities.
For our GIS maps, yes.
Is there any, are there any others?
Uh, generally, no.
In terms of reimbursable costs like postage and things like that, would it be more durable from a time standpoint to just say that? Applicants are required to reimburse that cost, or is there concern that we would have a hard time collecting it?
Yeah, I think it's difficult to do that. Different towns do it different ways. You could experience that where the town sends a bill and, you know. We can do that. It's. More.
I mean, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have to bear the cost.
It's also a cost to time to track it, send them the bill, ensure the collection. It's, you know.
It's time and cost no matter what.
Right, and the way it is now with an upfront fee is much more straightforward for everybody involved.
And so this comes in with the application then, and you guys just.
Right. In fact, the application's not complete for that.
Yeah.
Completely.
Okay.
Yes.
So Chris, how do our fees compare to other towns of comparable size and budget?
But, you know, I didn't look at a lot. I looked at a few in Berkshire County and we're comparable. We were. Comparable now, but we're not covering our costs now. So.
So they're nicely rubbed.
Yeah, we would look to include it, cover our costs. That's only fair, I believe. That's our recommendation, but there's no need to. Go crazy and charge more than that.
It's as cheap compared to the towns I work with in New York.
Eastern towns are probably much more expensive.
Just, I'm just wondering.
Like, this is like a fraction. Yeah.
But he, he does have the comparable fees for special permits. Lennox is a little less than us, Dalton's higher and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I did look at that for subdivisions and other things. It's about the same. Subdivisions in the eastern part of the state are, you know, you're looking at a thousand, a couple thousand initial fee plus. The expenses from there. But that's, that's in a place where it's very built up. There's a lot of review time. The different animal.
Jeremy? I never looked at it close enough, but how does the, how do the fees get rolled into the budget? When they, when they come back in, do they just, or where does the money go? Does it move to, like, what line item does it end up being?
Um, well. There are receiving accounts. For example, there's a planning board receiving account where Form A checks, site plan application checks are deposited into. And at the end of the year, that's. Cash, you know, from fees collected that goes into the, to the revenue balance for that year, eventually into free cash for the next year.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
So it really just goes in the general fund and then.
It's a general, it ends up in the general. Yeah.
All right.
So, I mean.
So it's not, for example, it's not allocated directly to postage, it's just a general fund.
Yeah, but to Pedro's point then, with, so I imagine staff or the cost of staff has gone up between the last time. These were raised, and so since it goes back into general fund, then it is helping to lower the costs of that. You could say of that salary.
It's, I wouldn't, I mean, do you wanna comment?
It's not really covering salary time.
No, 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 by the way, because it's going, so it's reducing.
It, think how small it is.
Well, I know how small it is.
So like, I think in the scope of our whole budget, this is like a tiny drop. I don't even, if they don't have it as a line item, it's like incidental. So I, I don't think we should quibble.
I mean, my time is not part of the fee.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
No, no, no.
My job, my salary is, is to do this. We don't charge an extra fee.
Well, you get paid.
But you could say that because like staff time, like you're accounting for that, right? Because it is going back into the general fund. I don't know.
I, I think it's such a small amount. I don't think it really amounts to anything. Okay, so action from us. Do you want us to take action on the ones we can take action on tonight, or you wanna do it all together in May?
Together.
Okay, all right, so.
What you probably wanna know is if we have any suggestions for changes so that when you go to other boards, if, you know.
Yeah.
Do.
I'm good with that.
I was gonna say, do we wanna like generally have a positive recommendation towards it so that Chris can pass that on to the other boards?
I mean, we don't have to vote.
No, we don't, but just to say generally, there was a. No, we don't, but just to say generally, there was a consensus. Anybody?
I mean, I just have questions on the subdivision side, why the, the new traffic is calculated into, into the.
I don't know, and. The subdivision rule and regulations. I think you should increase the fees, I mean, we haven't had a, a full subdivision application in. Eight years probably, at least. You had one for North Plain Road, but it was the town, so that fee was exempted. So it's, it's been quite a while, um, I was not around when the planning would set these fees, so I'm not sure what the rationale was, maybe that's just the. State of the art, I, I don't know. The board could look at the subdivision rules and regulations as a whole. Maybe there are things about it that you experienced during the North Plain Road process, or you know, that you wanna change. Design criteria, remember I saw some things like the light poles here were too high and the traffic there was different. Than the traffic count here, there were some internal inconsistencies, but maybe the other thing you wanna change anyway. So you could do that wholesale, that's a much larger job. In any case, changing fees is.
So basing the fee on the traffic count. Has become a bit of a problem because. I mean, I think historically, a suburban house generates somewhere seven to ten trips, but now we allow three houses. So in creating a lot, you're potentially creating thirty trips. So that's something we need to look at or think about.
Interesting point. Okay, something to think about before we talk again in May.
Alright, so feel free to say we're generally supportive, any speak with the other boards.
Okay.
Is there anything else on Town Center's report?
Uh, next week, I, I lost my, I just wanna give you a preview of what's next year. It's a busy meeting.
And no Kim?
It can be busy, but no problem. Just pass papers or. To make part of the record.
Uh, let's see, I'll take a second. Oh, right, your next meeting, you'll have the special permit. Uh, for the uplighting on the firehouse hose tower, that's a special permit, Jonathan will board. Uh, the site plan review continued for nine elm court, which is the Du Bois museum.
Freedom Center.
Sorry, what did I say?
Boys Freedom Center.
Boys, Du Bois Freedom Center.
Du Bois Freedom, what did I say?
I don't know.
Uh, so a special permit, a site plan for Du Bois Freedom. Uh, you'll have a recommendation to the Z B A. On a special permit. And, um. Any final discussion before town meeting, assigning, who's doing what at town meeting. So, do you wanna, like, do a site visit there, at the firehouse on your own?
Yeah.
Pretty easy.
It's pretty easy to get there.
Uh, and the Z B A recommendations, that's a downtown site, I don't think you need any site.
Okay.
Are you gonna want us to visit the other uplaided, uh, structures we have in the town?
So did you and Z B A already hear this?
You what?
The Du Bois Freedom Center?
They did. It's just something, yeah. They have another application.
Oh, do we know what it is?
It's, uh, the former Sonic Temple at two thirty two main. Also a non-credible structure.
Why is that, I can't, setback?
Yeah, side setback.
No windows?
Great, thank you so much, um, checking.
Okay. There's a two-part agenda item here, one part is for us to look at our own tasks. And the other part is to look at the outreach that we did to all the other towns and committees. But I propose that we look at our own, do our own housekeeping first and see how long that takes, what gets us. So, um, I'd like to take you back to October twelve, twenty twenty-three, when we actually reviewed the master plan. And if you look at it, again, today, we, the planning board was assigned thirty-eight tasks. Of, for which they were either lead or responsible party. Of those, fifteen were completed, six were ranked in progress or ongoing, not relevant. And then tonight, we're going to, and so we ultimately reviewed seventeen out of thirty-eight. And now we're looking at those, and we decided that nine were still relevant, so we're gonna be looking at nine tonight. And three possible ongoing projects, that means we don't really have to do anything because they're ongoing. So do you all have, I'd open up the document that's master plan, possible planning board task to be discussed further.
Do you have that for sharing, Chris?
I do.
What's the name of the final checking?
It's master plan, it's in the, it was in part of the.
It's document E underscore P B.
Thank you.
Chris just said it.
Second phase review, is what it's called. It's a PDF.
It's this one, right?
No, it's this one. No, it's this one.
There's another.
It's that one right there, that's what you have in your hand, that's it. Okay, so you, you all have your little piece of paper in front of you for some fashion? Okay, so what we have here is, it starts with the. The stat, if you remember, this is the night when we had all of these, we had seventeen things to review, and Brandy told us, okay, let's go through this fast. And we should be, um, because we're going to assign everything, a number. And number, we, so we assigned one for in progress, two for not in progress but relevant, which meant we needed to go back and look at it. Three is no longer relevant, four is completed. So what you're seeing here are the specific plans from the master plan. Or tasks that we wanted to go back and discuss, now what you see is the actual item as it's listed in the, um. In, on the master plan proper, and what's underneath is a very quick summary of a very quick conversation. And it should just remind you of what we were discussing that night, when we were looking at it. So this is just really to decide if there's something that we should be doing, because this is all about the master plan twenty thirteen. What's relevant today, what wasn't done, where are we with this? So.
So start with the first one, checking?
Yeah, do you want me to read what everybody said?
No, I don't think so, I think we can all, we can all read this, so.
So anyway, just for the people sitting out there and everything, it's, um, it's number eleven in the master plan tasks in the very back, um.
Up on the screen now.
Okay, so there you go, encourage development that incorporates existing or future agricultural and food production into its overall plan. And below is what you.
Great idea.
Discuss, yeah, and Jeremy came up with community gardens, so.
How, what does the planning board do though?
Well, so I, you know, this may spin into a different kind of conversation, so I wanna try and keep some guardrails on and just say, you know. If we're gonna get into a big discussion, let's specifically post it as an item on a future agenda. But I, I think we were somewhat unhappy with the P R D. And we've also not been happy with the O S R D, and we may wanna look at those in tandem and. And kind of rethink them, and there may be an opportunity to integrate agriculture with them and have them. Address this issue, but also address our items of dissatisfaction, um.
So is, is so far the P R D that have been approved, none has an agricultural component?
Right, right.
Is the, uh, idea here to encourage agriculture in. Kind of a, maybe a subdivision development, or is it to encourage?
Yes, I think so, yeah.
A subdivision.
Well, the coexisting already, I think, occurs in terms of right to farm community and. But yes, I think it'd be more of an opportunity to have an integrated housing component on agricultural property. We, we have a farm worker housing provision.
Yeah, we did the, the A D U.
Or it's, I think, possibly also about. When development happens, um. You know. From, from a developer's perspective, a, a flat, open, sunny, fine building is very easy to develop. For houses. And yet it chops up that land. And what was previously productive agricultural land is no longer usable, because it's everybody's backyard. I think that part of this discussion. Ten or fifteen years ago was to hopefully encourage either clustered development and preservation of. What, what, you know, what was productive agricultural land. And or to encourage the development of support services like farm or housing in that world, so.
Okay.
Two, two aspects.
And also make it more front of mind?
Yes.
So what we're trying to do here is still, is confirm that this is something we wanna discuss further in the short.
Relevant to put on our to-do list?
For a short term, to-do list, or we can say, this is something, it's a big job, and so, uh, we should defer it. Maybe till next year, it's on the list, but.
Oh, I think all of these are deferred until next year, yeah, this is a twenty twenty-five, this is like maybe the.
Or maybe.
List of maybe for twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Yeah.
And part of this is we're going to go back to the community, this doesn't just stop here, and so we're gonna go out and say, these are some of the things we discussed and. We'll, and we'll bring some of them to the surface and discuss it further with everybody. And maybe it's something that people really wanna get behind.
Okay, so let's keep this on the to-do list. But I, I, how do you guys feel about framing it in terms of looking at the P R D and the O S R D possibly for next year?
Um.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, I think it's.
How successful we were the last time.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and if you're looking for buy right.
Yes, I do.
If you're looking for buy right housing, like multi-unit housing outside. Maybe it would have to be clustered in order to, right?
Yeah, I don't wanna get into the specifics, so.
I don't know, but I need, so more than just the burden, right?
I mean, it may be a new P R D type thing for agricultural land.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you just from my own practice, I've been involved with four or five different. Um, like, density transfers, where you were allowed to transfer the density of the whole parcel, you had to, like, ascertain a. Um, the buildable area of the lot, and then from there, you could transfer the density to a smaller area. And thus preserving, but you had to have an active agricultural component, they had to run cheap on it. Or work with an organic farmer or something, but yeah, so you kept that land working agriculture, but you still got to.
Yeah. We're not set up to do any transfer density, right? Currently.
I don't think so, I think that's why, if we looked at it in terms of a P R D, there might be.
Did that in Massachusetts.
I believe in Canada.
Okay.
Wasn't that how the P R D worked though, it allows you to cluster, right?
Allows you to cluster, doesn't have, doesn't have density.
Well, uh, you work with the underlying density and you cluster.
No, but we're not transferring any density.
Um, I'm not suggesting transferring it to another parcel, so I misspoke if that was the, um, the way it was interpreted, I apologize for that. Yeah, no, uh, I have been involved in those too, but I, yeah, you can't do that, or maybe you can now. Okay.
Well, I think we need to.
It's a very New York thing.
And it's fairly used, I can tell you about. Alright, thirteen?
Okay, so are, we have a, a rollover, this is going to be something we'll be continuing to think about in the short-term to-do list and thinking of P R D. Okay, thirteen, provide zoning and explore other regulatory incentives to residential, nonprofit and commercial projects. That redevelop e- existing buildings or sites and incorporate, here's the interesting part, small energy efficient dwelling units and mixed uses. Incentives might include shared parking or density increases.
Are we already doing this?
Yeah. Oh, basically, the building code forces you to build small energy efficient dwellings. I don't know that.
I can't hear you, David.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not, I was just saying that the building code already. Um, you know, incorporate small energy efficient dwelling units, you can't build anything that is not energy efficient, is my point. The existing buildings, I mean, we don't have any incentives for. For using, or reusing buildings other than, um, smart growth.
Hotel.
Um.
But what are the incentives there to, for reusing existing buildings, that, that only thing I can think of is in smart district.
Well, the historic, the hotel, uh, by law allows maybe forty-five rooms if you redevelop a historic property, right?
But none of them are tied to energy efficiency, right?
But that's code.
There's, there's a couple clauses in here.
No.
That's not the point of this one?
You said before, one of the things you jumped on was that we should be talking about energy producing, not just energy efficiency? Is that relevant here?
They don't have to produce any energy.
Is there any incentive for doing that?
Yeah, well, we could, Jonathan, you know, we, we could talk about having some requirements, that new buildings, for example. That have to be orient, no, that they have to be at least oriented. Things like that, I mean.
That works so well on North Plain Road, yeah.
I mean, we could, there, I think, I think that's a separate item, uh, than this thirty, nine thirteen. I think there is some room in the, in the master plan to, to promote or incentivize energy producing. Uh, projects in town, but I, again, I don't know how it relates to this number thirteen.
This is a little amorphous, if you ask me.
And we already have a, we already did things with shared parking. And we have a, and we have a, a vehicle for. For avoiding that, or eliminating that parking requirement.
And making, making energy efficient dwelling units in existing buildings is not easy. So I'm not sure that, that this is, you know, some, a goal that we should be. It seems kind of counterintuitive in a way.
So if, you know, if you renovate a building today. In terms of energy standard, what, what's required?
If you are renovating more than fifty percent of the square footage of the building, you have to bring up the code. Now.
The square footage or the vol, or the value, or both?
None of the space, the actual space still.
Okay.
Stretch, stretch code allows you to use the H R rating, which is very flexible, so you don't have to meet our values and walls, and you can do it other ways.
You can get a, yeah.
Still, you know. Buying a super, super hot, energy efficient condensing unit is super, super expensive.
And is that for residential or commercial?
My commercial probably is the same, I, I.
So you were just thinking.
Just residential. That's why you see a lot of developers doing things incrementally. Right?
They wanna get to the fifty percent.
That's right, they'll take out a building permit to do, if you have eight units, they'll take out a building permit to renovate three of them.
Yeah.
And then they'll take out another building permit, then, uh, it's hard to trigger.
But that's another reason too, why a developer. Might see, we're using existing buildings, just so expensive, they might as well just tear down the building.
Sure, absolutely. Which is why, if we wanna preserve our building stock here, especially downtown, we may wanna provide incentives for. Uh, redeveloping existing buildings and sites, which I, you know, which is the part of this that. But we already. Jumps out, I mean. We're already giving money to someone to redevelop two projects through C D A funds.
So there are other ways.
Yeah, there are ways to do it.
Or ignoring it.
No.
Or, yeah, which can offset those costs, yeah.
No, but this is, this is a, a planning board item, so.
We don't have an energy committee though, do we?
Not anymore. So this is about redeveloping existing buildings or sites in, in terms of. Underutilized sites, Chris, what do you think our inventory is outside of, say, Mills and New Zatonic?
Oh, I'm, I'm sure. Underutilized doesn't mean a lot of different things to different people.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not reading it as underutilized, I'm reading it as any.
Any existing building.
Again, it's, it, to provide zoning would be through some sort of incentive, whether it's density or. Or, you know, waiving sewer fees and connection fees or waiving permit fees or things like that.
Or parking too, right? It's a big.
Parking, I mean.
If you reduce parking, you get more.
It's more can we reduce parking then?
Well, I mean.
I mean, I would love, you know.
Multi-use is, lets us also share parking and that's a, it's another reason for encouraging multi-use.
The, go, go ahead.
Uh, just in terms of the language there, commercial products that redevelop, I would like to add for repurpose. Interesting buildings.
This is from the master plan, so we can't edit it at the moment, I don't think.
No, but I. I, I do think that's what we're.
I think.
That's eventually where we're going.
It is ultimately where we're, we're going.
I think that's a good suggestion.
I think we want to leave this in there then, Jackie, but I'm not sure we're ready to take any action on it. We may have to take action on it, like looking zone by zone, right?
Well, what's interesting is this is we're looking at the master plan for how effective was it then? What is it today? What do we change going forward? Because I still have in my craw, something you said early, early on about. What we need to do for the master plan anyway, which is to deal with climate change and so.
Right, so if, if we put an asterisk on this one though, it may need to be revisited to become more implementable.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
You know, it needs a little more specificity.
Given where we are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel it, it's hard to discern what an actionable item would be out of the school.
Fine. Okay, now let's go on to number twenty-six. Oh, this is a good one. Um, use design guidelines workbook to ensure new development and rehabilitation in character with the surrounding form, lot coverage. And general appearance.
I think we should just nix this one.
When was the last time anyone used the design guidelines workbook?
That's one point.
Do we have a good.
Second point.
Well, then what you're trying to.
That's the second point.
No, the dance, the dance around this, when we first went here was like general, those design code guidelines are so old. And I think, didn't you say that you at least made it printable?
Yeah, I mean.
You went back and just run through them all again when you're on DAC?
So I, I'm of the opinion that this town has its own character and its character is an eclectic character. There isn't anything that is, that defines it, it's not.
You mean, we can't define in character with the surrounding form?
It's a, it's eclectic, I mean, how would you do that?
Decide in character with.
That's walk down main, that's walk down Main Street. Look at all the, the different types of building, like what is exactly the character of town?
I don't disagree with you at all. And lot coverage and general appearance, I mean, we've been trying to, yeah.
What is, uh, do, do you have a master plan in front of you, Jackie?
I do.
What is L U T point five? Is that transition areas? I forget how that was set up.
Do you know the page number?
No, well, item twenty-six.
Oh, they find.
Must be towards the.
The land use section is one of the first sections with recommendations, but what is, what is section two?
What is, what is, I think it's.
L U.
T five.
Oh, I see it, it's, um, L U what now?
T five.
T. L U T five?
Yes.
L U.
Eight, I know, I can get to page eighteen.
Eight point five.
T point five.
You know, one other aspect with designing guideline, both of that, sometimes they will add extra cost to projects. Because of unnecessary decorations that, that projects must need, we wanted to again conform to the form and character of town.
Like cornices and.
Window trims and, and like, um, what do you call those things? Shutters, all kinds of.
L U D?
It's a T five.
T is in.
Oh, P is in five, oh, here it is. Use the existing Great Barrington Design Guidelines Workbook to ensure sites are, oh, well, this is the same thing. Aren't developed in character with surrounding form, lot coverage.
What was it, was it a specific area of town?
It's in, under make transition zones.
Where's your L U four?
So, so, uh, the reason I'm asking is, um, I'm trying to define.
Mixed use corridors.
You know, Whuston Village had a land, there was a land use section, L U H for Whuston Village, I think there's a L U D. Land use downtown, and I was trying to figure out what this strategy twenty-six.
It's a mixed use area.
Mixed use transition.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's mixed, it's on portions of Route seven, such as State Road near the fire station on Main Street, south of the police station, retail offices, et cetera.
So that's the, that's the M X D area, that's the two X area.
This is a mixed use corridor in form and function, yet new mixed uses would not be possible, of course, to conform in the existing zoning.
Although maybe with our current zoning we've done there, we've already addressed this.
So maybe the zoning changes that.
Yeah.
That have been done like on State Road. You know, one of the reasons we did those is because of the, all of the buildings of the, not all of them, of the street, but the zoning at the time. Would have required a new building to be built way back, yeah. And so the zoning change.
Well, I, I think this whole, I think this whole L U four is done. Uh, we, we've done the two transition.
L U T five.
Well, L U T five is, is part of L U B four.
I see.
Specifics maybe.
Which is the transition, uh, zones.
May, maybe accomplished through other ways, but effectiveness and where you use the design guideline workbook, maybe something you want to think about. It's on the website, I think it's on the planning board website, or it's on the planning department website, by the way. Um. The design guidelines work, work, I think, was written in the nineties. It's not irrelevant, it's. It's, it's a good handbook, I think, but I think it specifically dealt with the L U seven four or.
Okay.
Um, it didn't deal, you know, residential areas, it didn't deal with Whuston Village, I don't think. Anyway, that's what the design. Well, Whuston Village didn't exist in the nineties.
Uh, the seventeen ninety?
For the town boards.
So in terms of twenty-six, um. I, I will add, just for our due diligence purposes, we'll add, um, design guidelines workbook review at a future meeting, but. I think the zoning addresses a lot of the, the zoning changes we've made in the last few years. For those transition areas addresses a lot of the intent here.
Okay. I don't think we're going to be urgent there.
Okay, so number thirty-four, which is explore natural resource protection zoning. That preserves agricultural water and wetland and scenic resources with sensitive housing, house siting, roads and driveways. And mandating conservation subdivisions. So Chris went into a discussion about. A background on N R P C and flipping certain things upside down, so if you want to read what he was saying. That would be useful.
I think if we take up Pird and O S R D, we may be able to incorporate this in that same conversation.
Right. So just to refresh your memory, so it's. A typical conventional subdivision now says your lots must be, for example. One acre, one acre, one acre, one acre, which ends up splitting up what might be in this. Well, and wildlife or more productive agricultural zone. So let's say you have a ten acre lot where you could put. And for a ten acre parcel, you put ten.
One acre.
For example. That's a conventional subdivision. Here, here, all very equally spaced with a big road in the. A natural resource protection zone says, no, you can't do that anymore. You must take those ten, you can still do those ten. But it must be clustered so that the natural resource area is, is protected and safe. You can build the same density, but it has to be here, you have to put the rest.
But so much of our natural resources are already protected.
True.
And, and only regulated by Big Tom Tom or whatever.
This hasn't been implemented a lot around the state, but, um.
I think effectively we already have it.
I think there are some in the Quabon reservoir area. I think Williamstown has a form of it. Because they protect their high ridges with large lot zoning, I wouldn't, I don't know.
But we have, we have, we have Sandy Mountains overlook, so.
It's something to. Um. Something to think about, if you have, if you think that. Um, Pirds and O S R D developments should be developed in a certain way that it's really clustered. This would say you must cluster. You want to do, and, and then in O S R D and a Pird, it wouldn't be a special permit anymore, because it would be the buy right.
Right, right, exactly.
You'd need a special permit if you wanted to do it.
A conventional, which honestly, I think sounds better.
So it's incentivizing you when you. Doing it well, protecting the resources of, that they want.
Do you think we'll get time? Cause it's so much cheaper because no big roads.
So.
Yeah, with that, it, it's also cheaper for developer, you're right, because it's not as, as long as.
But we haven't.
So without getting into a long discussion of this, um, where would you? Where would we define the natural resource protection zone? And it would be. All the, all of agricultural land, uh, or.
Stefan?
I mean, yeah, okay. So that's what, that's what we have.
I think this is like a June discussion for two meetings, probably, maybe more.
Okay.
But just like to look at developable land, what's available, and then.
I'll tell you, the conservation agent is very concerned about the mine and valley.
Mm hmm, about the what?
Mine, mine and valley.
In what way?
Well.
It's got a lot of frontage.
It's got a lot of frontage and a lot of empty land.
It's a pretty unique, uh.
It's very habitat.
Yeah, and a lot of wetlands, man.
Okay. Well, with the big jump, but.
Very little infrastructure.
And there's already roads that go back and there's not much development on them.
We'll take it up as a topic.
All right, in June for two meetings.
Well, with, with number eleven.
Yeah, which June, twenty twenty-six.
Um, all right.
Okay, number, uh, one oh one, ensure zoning does not preclude other renewable energies like bio-waste digesters. And everybody talked about the batteries.
Yes, this is, I would go right there. I think I might have reached that point. Um, I don't think our zoning does now.
Who's the, there's a farmer in.
In Ashley Falls.
In Ashley Falls that, that has a bio-waste.
Yes. And that's an agricultural operation, it's not considered a commercial operation.
I mean, accessory users, so is that.
It gets just straight ahead.
That's permitted under sixty-one A, remember? Or A V Rs, isn't it?
I, I'm not following what you're. Your example is.
The, I forget his name, but the, the farmer in Ashley Falls. That has a bio-waste. Uh, generator.
I think it's a great, great point, man.
Whatever it is.
We're trying to understand the mechanism that allows him to have that. Is it just permitted as part of his agricultural operation? That's not a separate commercial operation.
It's probably permitted as part of the farm use, but, you know.
Under sixty-one A or A V R?
Chapter forty-eight, section three. Is, is the land use, is the agricultural zoning exemption, so it's. A bio-waste digester.
Yeah.
Like a newer digester.
Yeah.
That produces energy for the farm, that would be part of the farm use, that would be allowed by ready.
Yeah, and so they could do it here.
Yep.
And who else is going to do it? Is the town going to do it? At the transfer station? I don't think so.
Hmm, yeah, but like, hmm, I knew maybe would have, would do it if he, if he's sick of burning wood. Maybe he'd want to do it.
Who would?
Would you, Dana, would you?
I think that.
Other on, in Newsonville?
Yeah, the thing we would have to think about though is like the, then some sort of organic matter would need to come in, right? And be provided in sufficient quantity, the thing that makes it make sense for a dairy farm, let's say. Is that every day those cows are producing a lot of.
Isn't the question whether or not this is something. Or not just this type of energy production, but any other alternative energy production.
Yeah.
Be allowed in town or, or at least for the town to provide a vehicle for it.
I, I think this is one that falls under a climate change discussion or, uh. Uh, because I, I still think energy storage is relevant component here, so I think it's worth revisiting.
Can we regulate batteries?
We, we, they're not mentioned at all.
They're, they're not, uh, so battery energy storage systems. Whether it's a small scale or a single unit, small household or whether.
For a solar or some Y.
Or whether it's to, yeah, to store the, the energy from a solar field, we don't talk about those a lot.
But it's not prohibited.
If it's not listed as a use, it's.
If it's the primary use of a.
Yeah.
Probably allowed in a home, but it's probably not.
But it's like a commercial accessory, because it's got to be. Getting its energy somewhere.
Well, it could be getting its, so let's say.
Getting it from the grid, you mean?
Um.
It could be getting it from an array that's on the same site.
Yeah, but that's, that's.
It would be accessory.
But you have to, I mean, I mean, it's a.
If it's a separate lot.
We don't have the, um, what was the committee?
Let me send you guys more information on that.
Like the battery discussion is a. Cause if you get enough of them in one place, there is a risk.
Mm hmm.
And then you also have to think about lifespan and where, where that's going. And so there's, you know, and then you have, and I mean, the, the.
Are you aware of any municipalities?
No, we have to dive into this.
Uh, we were looking.
Field just regulate, uh, that's just.
Did they? And I think in the Pioneer Valley, there's a couple as well. Cause there's one at Mount Tom.
And then there's, uh, yeah. There's the whole discussion about.
Wait, wait, we're having two conversations, hang on.
I mean. Yeah, I mean. Um. I mean, I think it's a good idea not to limit things like this, but I don't know if we're really the board to, I mean, I think we do need some. We do need another committee in town to talk about energy.
Well, I think this is a zoning question.
No, I, I know.
Yeah.
And so I think like we could easily get sidetracked until the, you know, that, the non-zoning stuff about it.
Yeah, I, I think we have to keep our focus on the land use piece of it in terms of, but I, I think. There may be other energy technologies and we just want to be familiar with them and what their land use requirements are.
Yeah.
Even if it's just building orientation, right? All right, so we'll keep this one on the list of two, two, probably.
Climate change discussions. Okay, one sixty. Ensure quality streetscape environment, including landscaping and signage appropriate to downtown. Work with the Business Improvement District, Chamber of Commerce, Design Advisory Committee, Historical Mission, Commission and Historic District Commission. To develop signage and information kiosks to help visitors. And. Do you like the comments?
I'm, I'm just curious, uh, yeah, the excerpt to Pedro's, I'm serious comment.
Be serious about it.
Yeah, I, I can't, honestly, I'm sorry, I can't remember what you were feeling serious about.
He was feeling serious about the assignment of quality streetscape environment to DAC.
Knowing myself, the way I know myself, I was feeling pretty serious about, no, I was pretty serious about, and. Forgive me, but I, I mean, I think we need to do a much better job of our, of establishing, designing our streetscapes. I mean, there's, there's a lot on the, on the streets right now, it's, I mean, I walk these streets every day, I go somewhere. And I, there's just stuff all over the streets, all over the main street at least.
Well, my concern is that I'm always seeing signs that are out of date or falling apart. Like you go to the head of Railroad Street and you see some of the stores are listed and some aren't, and the paint's chipping. And like, has anybody ever looked at the sign in a long time? It's, it, there's a lot of that. And then I'm looking at windows with things plastered on glass that really shouldn't have anything on the glass because we've already assigned. I'm now talking DACs at you, but it's basically, there's a lot of cleanup that has to be done besides removing the growth.
It sounds like maybe what we should do is like pull all these other commissions and, and entities. Yeah, no.
It's, it's like everybody in, in Great Barrington is part of this.
Yeah, I think this one is part of a further conversation with the entities listed here.
It's a part of this, I mean, there is definitely a part of this, except.
I don't know if it's, I see, my, my view is that it's not zoning, but that this board does have. You know, a purview to, to design, have design, uh, influence or.
Mm hmm.
Or to reg, not regulate, but to talk about these kinds of things, right? The way that our streets are, are cluttered. For example, like what can we do to unclutter them? What can we do to make them a little nicer, more comfortable for people? You know, like all, all these things, I think, and I think what way to do, the way of doing it is by bringing in. You know, these other committees in here that maybe do have a little bit more say in it, or that at some point are reviewing projects that have an effect on these things.
Was it the bring public works as well?
Absolutely.
Uh, there, there's the, the signage and the kiosks, trying to direct people as to where things are and how to get there.
But that's my.
I know, but that's on, in this.
Yeah, right, exactly, which is why the private. Or quasi-public entities are the things that need to help drive some of that, because some of it may be building owner's responsibility, right, to keep their.
This was my frustration with designing. This was my frustration with design advisory, because this is perfect for that committee, except that that committee like can't do it.
Bred's on it.
You know, well, maybe we should, uh, consider, uh, the design advisory committee needs more teeth.
I think it does, for these things.
That in our jurisdiction though? I don't, I mean, I'm not thinking it's not a good idea.
Yes, it's in our bio.
Creation of it.
Tell me what ED two point three, like what that category?
Oh, I'd love to do that.
Economic development. Okay, this is in terms of, you're gonna like walkability in the community and wayfinding in the community.
It's, it's, it's a step within the overall goal of reinforced downtown, it's business center, it's no case of a classic vital small town.
Probably also needs to include who's atonic unless there was a separate section. I don't remember. There may have been, okay.
And now we have a committee that's doing Tucson stuff.
Good.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we'll, we'll keep talking about this one, but it's a broader discussion.
Yeah, I don't think it's a.
It's not.
For next one. I would argue that it's, it should be at least medium priority, because how much more can we really? Put on the sidewalks downtown?
Are there plants to put more on them?
Although I do love. Things just appear though.
They just pop up things, you know?
What's in a cancel? Cause I don't.
The garbage bins, the benches, the way that the cars interact with the sidewalk.
It's getting the ballers.
The ballers, I mean, you know, how much more can we possibly take there, you know?
I mean, who has ultimate responsibility? That's the problem. We just named tons of different organizations that are looking at downtown.
The state has.
Who's gonna step in?
See, this thing about the state, I interviewed the guy from the state with DOT. On the radio. And they, I don't know if they were just being nice or if they were lying, but they say that they always work with communities. And that they always listen and that they always negotiate and it takes, you know?
They weren't lying.
You know, so. But I, I mean, in this town, in my experience in this town, when we break, when we say the word the state, it? It implies that there's like a, it just comes and imposes their will and that's just the case.
No, in DOT, I have to say, this is not quite relevant, but the DOT in Tucson or in state of Arizona? Not the same as here, but they were nicer than nice. They were always working with? The Arts Council in Tucson to get public art in the streets or whatever was needed. They would stop the the backhoe from.
This DOT is similar.
Conservation site, you know, it's, they're amazing.
The only thing we can't do is the crosswalks across main street.
Cannot be red and white.
Cannot be.
They have to have just lines.
They have to be.
Okay.
Other than that. Everything in the right way is. They'll, they'll work with us, yeah.
Do you think a little working group across all these organizations?
It's good to be out of the meeting.
Listen, I honestly think that design advisory, design advisor can take these things, this is? Perfect for that committee to give it, if if design advisor were given these tasks? To work with the town to implement certain things, I'm sure he wouldn't have any problems staffing it. Or not staffing it, but, um, you know, filling the seats up or having meetings, right, because people would do it.
So let's do that. Let's send it to D A C.
Representative.
I think what we do is.
Well, it still exists.
Design advisory is in the zoning bylaw. I think we, we can work with the town to give it, you know, what we think it needs. It could be a sort of arm of this board to accomplish certain goals that may be set for this.
Shouldn't rewrite the?
Maybe.
In the next cycle?
Maybe.
We can put it on a meeting to review DAP requirements.
Just? If I may? Thinking, big, big picture, I've expressed this to this board before. I, I think it's important for the, you know, the, this board tends to get into a cycle of reviewing this zoning bylaw, what changes can we make? Next year and and that's what you do. Rather than pulling back and looking at the town overall as a whole, rather than getting stuck into this year, we're gonna deal with section three point one point four and that's what we're gonna do. And it gets? You get very stuck, I think, the planning board. The role of the planning board is, is much broader than just tweaking zoning. It, it should include design considerations and landscaping considerations and energy and agriculture and signage and economic development. You're a very thoughtful group and I, I guess I just encourage? You all to, um, embrace a broader role rather than just? Being the, the zoning authors.
Here, here.
Chris will sound, Chris had over drink.
Can I second that motion? Okay, can we, okay, this is good, we'll, but we'll consider all of this and we'll move on to one eighty. Which is, you ready? It's revised zoning bylaws and subdivision regulations to support and protect farmland, including, for example? Agricultural resource areas to require clustering of homes, minimum or maximum setbacks and common driveways and no permanent disturbance of agricultural soils.
Great way to do that. Get rid of the OSRD and get rid of our subdivision. I don't know if we can do that? Through forty eight, but get rid of our subdivision laws. Develop the PRR would be exclusively, or the only way you can subdivide is if you cluster, that's it.
So this one will get lumped with eleven and thirty four.
That's.
Man, I like the new show of it, but the? Implementation is gonna be a bit of an issue because? In order to maintain farm, we need farmers.
But we're talking about open spaces. I, I, when I, when I, when I read the word farm in some place, I think in open space, like how do you preserve that? Subdivisions will not do that. So why do we have them? If that's what we want? That's what I want. That's why I love this place, because I can get out of town in this open space.
To, to your point though, which is a valid point, is, you know, maybe there's some, uh? Inclusionary zoning for farmhouseing, you know?
I mean, if, if farm line is being developed, it means a farmer is probably retiring and probably. But, uh? Trying to make money off his assets.
Well? Maybe, maybe the farm, maybe it's just not economic, but it could be economic that the farmer could develop a few homes here, but keep the rest.
Well, the farmer's not gonna develop.
What, or at least back to the farm, build solar here and farm there, so it's? It's helpful to economics, yet keep the farm workable.
But also, farmers right now are generally those that can afford the land to farm. Meaning, are there more farmers?
No, no farmer can afford land.
Well, I, I, but I'm, but I'm saying there's a whole group of farmers that really can't afford land. And don't have access to it. And so is, is it really lack of farmers or is it lack of available farmland?
I think not lack of available farm.
Well, no, 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 I'm, what I'm saying is available means they can afford it.
This is why I've heard for us, and we can't help that. But if we think of farmland as open space, it's a different story.
But could if like, if what you're talking about? And so then it preserves open space and then that open space can then be leased.
That's right, it's always there.
But I mean? Yeah, I mean, can?
This could be a bigger discussion because people can use the APR process too, to? Exclude a small area for housing and I don't know the full extent and maybe Chris you know? More, but I know you can reserve building areas out of the land that goes in the APR and then the? Development potential gets paid out.
But doesn't the APR, it takes the control of that agricultural land outside of the hands of the property owner?
It just gives the, it gives the state a right of first refusal.
But isn't there, don't, isn't?
It keeps it in agriculture and it pays the owner.
For the development rights.
The development, right.
But doesn't?
But you, before you give those development rights away, you go through a process of sort of like assessment? Of what is gonna go into the APR and you have an opportunity at that point to reserve.
Yeah.
Let's say you wanna build a house for your three kid, you wanna build a house for your three kids, you could preserve an area for them. I don't know if you can stretch it beyond that? To say you could build like ten houses or something?
But I think what happens with the agricultural land after that owner is not using it, then it's outside of the control of that owner or? The town or it's to committee, right?
APR can be really powerful. It's generally used on larger parcels and only when the state has the money to? Put the money in. So smaller parcels, small orchard, a small community garden, these are things that APR wouldn't be interested in.
Unless George Beebe was buying.
So, so different development strategies, um?
I mean, Wendy Hill may be important, uh, to supplement an APR strategy that is used.
Isn't APR, but they're still using it at that.
Well, but they, but they carved out the buildings in Wendy Hill, uh, they could have carved that more, I guess, and done? Whatever they want with it, because once, once you carve out that land, I mean, it's. But it affects your ability to get the APR.
We, we obviously wanna have a bigger discussion about sort of? Smart development and what that looks like in the community and? So I, I think this should be a topic that we take, and even in the context of what Chris just said about sort of zooming back to the whole town.
I mean, we keep coming back to cluster housing and or the PRR over and over in these things that we haven't.
This is, this is in the master plan, because one of the things we heard during that process was? As Peter said, these are the things that we both value about living in this area, the open spaces and whatnot. And so? Having those places and spaces open and working.
While allowing for some growth to continue to occur since we have a housing shortage.
So if that's still what people think, as you revisit the master plan? That's still how people are thinking? Then? It would be within your purview to develop strategies to implement that.
But there's a, there's a conflict in, in the way this is written, because no permanent disturbance of agricultural soils? Which means you can't do anything there.
You're suggesting it, it may not be practical, yeah.
Well, you wanna? I mean, you can't say no permanent disturbance, but you, you wanna reduce it, obviously.
Alright, we'll take that one off this eleven and thirty four.
Eighty, okay, so our next one is one eighty one. And it's ensure that regulations support diverse income streams for working farms. Including, for example, special events in farmlands, farm restaurants, farm stands and renewable? Energy facilities.
Doesn't forty chapter three, is it chapter three?
A G three point one.
Doesn't forty chapter three, is that where it goes?
Um, forty chapter three is the agricultural exemption.
But doesn't that? Kind of cover this? No.
Why?
Not for much of reason.
Right.
So you can't have a, have a bridal venue? On a farm without.
Oh, I see, I see, got it.
So this is about event planning and agrotourism, so part of what we say here.
Farmer.
And we did, I mean, we did revise the zoning to allow? Solar.
Right.
So that was one step in the right direction.
But I mean, what you're suggesting is interesting, right, because it? You know, to allow a farm to? To be a wedding venue? Would require it to, since most of them are either R four or two? They wouldn't be able to do it. They would require them to get a special permit or to? Get a Z P A permit.
Well, there are farms all over the state that, that are doing that.
Sure, but we, but here, how would they do it here?
Well, we'd either have to revise the zoning or they'd have to get some sort of special? Permit from somewhere.
They'd have to do it now, right?
Yeah.
We, we'd need an agrotourism addition to the bylaw that? Allows for, uh? Agriculture adjacent commercial uses.
That'd be a fun one to get here in town.
It's, uh, the town of Claverick over in New York has a bylaw that's actually pretty good and they've got several instances of it, so? And instances, um, an orchard that makes, um? Brandy and other spirits. They grow all the fruit on the property and so it's a? Farmed glass distillery and the distillery is a commercial use, so the distillery has a restaurant with it, so.
And it helps take the farming business, I'm sure. Or the, or the orchards or whatever.
And there's educational uses as well.
There's educational uses, yeah, I mean, I, I haven't seen it myself, but I? Read codes that include things like, um, like, uh, agrotourism, like, uh? Not Airbnb's, but like little cabins that people use, so.
Agrotourism.
Yeah, no, that's interesting. I was thinking about events, but you're right, it could be many, many things.
Yeah. Okay.
See, what happened when we went through everything back in October?
Yeah.
And then the last one is me with the collect work, but we.
Can I, can I say something about this agricultural?
Sure, sure, sure.
Uh, this might be one where, I mean, this is like? This strategy is one strategy in the goal of economic viability of local agriculture. I don't think this is something we can do by ourself. I think that, you know, the other, uh, uh, strategies here? Uh, these also have to be done, I think, in conjunction, so if somebody's addressing agricultural tourism? There's no point in us addressing this, uh, topic separately. So this one might be one where we need to actually get together with, uh, whoever the other boards are that are assigned. I don't know whether it's the ag, ag committee or whether it's the stock board or whoever.
But it's, but it's currently zoning, that's in the way.
It, it is, but in the way of what? And that's what I'm.
Oh, we would get their ideas.
Well, actually, it's in the way of all of these other things that aren't assigned to.
It's, it, and it's a very good point. I think it's warrants a conversation with the ag committee for sure. In terms of what are they seeing farmers need to help them be more economically viable and how can we be responsive?
Right.
Right, yeah, I think we definitely wanna have that conversation. Absolutely.
Yeah, I, well, I think this is really a little trip around, you know, I mean, this might tie into what they wanna do.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to number two ten. Regularly review progress in implementing this plan annually for the planning board and select board.
But we, we actually, we are doing that.
We actually have.
Yeah, I don't know why that one's still on here.
Okay, but the, the issue was also, I, I've all, it's reviewed sooner than later.
Yeah.
Because it's been ten, eleven years now since we've kind, I know there's reviews periodically, but it also? And when we get to, I don't know whether we wanna do part two of this discussion about master plan and our outreach assignments, but? I'm sure that when you've reached out to a lot of these committees, they're not aware of what they were tasked with doing, or they haven't been looking at the master plan in a while.
Right.
And so, um? I think this is something that we should be thinking about more seriously.
So we are.
And touching. Place with others.
See, it couldn't just be.
Yeah.
It should be all. Should be.
That's a big ask, just recognizing just what everyone's been going through trying to reach the other boards, but?
Right.
I, I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just saying it's a big ask to do that annually.
I mean, but it's a big ask right now, because when we get in front of these, I mean, we have to go through every single.
Maybe we send letters to everybody annually and say, hey, we invite you to come to a planning board meeting.
Oh, how easy they can ignore that letter.
It, it's just, it's easy, I mean, to be ignored with your phone calls, so. But I think the goal is to try.
Well, because it, this whole process raises, we'll talk about it later, but? There's a lot of interesting things that we're uncovering.
Mm hmm. It's a lot.
You know, I just put, there are three other things that are, I lumped under ongoing, because we really didn't discuss them. But they were kind of like? Something that I'd love you guys just to read quickly and see if it's worth going back and considering, because it wasn't. Well, that could be. I feel happy, that's.
Uh, one oh four, providing zoning and regulatory incentives.
About that, true.
Is that?
Not, not today.
It's a little different than thirty.
That's, this is new development.
Right.
One more existing.
Yeah. Uh, Pedro, I'd love your opinion on number one oh four as far as implementability in? Terms of new construction and what's already required by code? I'm not sure what multifamily homes inefficient layouts is, either.
Yeah, but what this is saying again is a per five, and so I've always wanted to address this with you guys. I was, I bring it up occasionally, you know? Let's give some incentive to people who wanna build, you know, passive houses. Passive house multifamily building, passive house commercial building, so that we encourage it. It's, it's going on across country.
Mm hmm.
Could I ask you a question? Passive house, what does that mean?
Passive is just a name, uh?
Passive is just an uh, that's an energy standard. It's not a zero. It's not a zero. It's a, it's an energy efficient standard. And it's just called passive house, but you can apply it to any kind of building. It just has certain air tightness requirements, insulation requirements, fresh air requirements, light air.
In your opinion, what would a zoning or regulatory incentive be? Would it be density?
By right development for passive house multifan, for example. Could be, I don't think, then again, density doesn't work for us because wherever a big project would be done in town, the density is fine. Because the bylaw has plenty of space to build. I've done the numbers.
One million times.
Yeah, remember, I was pushing density bonuses here until I realized that, wait a minute.
But aren't we already, I guess we're not getting it everywhere, but are we already getting multi-unit? By right, if, I mean, we'll know after this town meeting.
I mean, I was just giving an example. I think we need to to look for other hurdles that there are to to.
I mean.
Someone encourage.
The multi, well, I guess inefficient layouts, it could be so in the zones that were not. Recommending every recommended future, but only clustered. Sure, serve open space.
Sure. We were good. In light of the setback requirements, do we also need a density requirement?
No, that's what I'm saying. We don't need density requirements.
I mean, if you built completely to the setback lines, that should be, that should be allowed, it seems to me. It should be fine.
Yeah, I'm with you. I agree with it.
So when we were talking about by right development on West Stockbridge Road, what about um, we were talking about incentives there for a while? Do we have any in there now?
As I just mentioned, I, when we're looking at the incentives, when I looked at them, it didn't make sense because the zoning already allows plenty of density. Plenty of bulk and height and density, so it didn't make sense. Nobody would would buy into them.
I think the incentive that was offered. Two years ago at town meeting, if I remember, was about providing affordable.
Affordable units for.
Yes.
Well, I was thinking about childcare.
Did you think about childcare?
I wanted to.
Yeah.
I heard, I remembered that being one of the incentives. If you did this, we could allow you to do X.
Child, the thing that I found with childcare is that, you know. I mean, we could provide it and have it be there, but that requires, one, that the childcare is there in perpetuity as a commercial use in this building, right? So somebody's building a building and they have a space and they're gonna dedicate it to childcare. That's all they can do in perpetuity in that building, right? Because we gave them permission to do something. Or we lifted a restriction so that they could do that project. They could never put a restaurant in there or a retail shop or anything else in there. And then you have to have a commitment. And then, you know, getting licenses through the state to be a childcare provider is super, so again.
It's complicated.
And then employees to do it.
Should we look at the setback requirements?
In general?
Yeah, because.
Some, some of those, yeah, sure.
Because. In terms of the building code, it seems to me if you're closer than ten feet, then you have to have some fire protection. Am I right, I'm right? Uh but our zoning is twenty feet.
It's ten and B two.
And so it seems to me that that's something that we should consider if you wanna increase density. In reducing some of those setbacks.
I think, yeah, I'm with you, I mean, you know.
Maybe that's part of a zoomed out, like, do the zones and their dimensional requirements make sense?
And and if you look at, if you, if you look at clustering bylaws across the country, you know, they're talking about six feet apart. And in Venice, my house was six, six feet from the neighborhood on both sides.
You mean twelve feet wall wall? No, three feet, or to your property line, okay.
And it was fine.
You know, setbacks in this town meeting have always been a question because if you go through the district neighborhoods in town. There are many, many buildings that don't prescribe to the setback. So why couldn't you just take the lock coverage and put your building wherever the hell you want it? You know?
Well, I think you need some setback requirements, but I don't, I'm not sure you need ten feet.
I don't, I don't, but it's a different discussion.
It's a look at the development pattern and try and match it.
Well, you might not need any downtown.
Well, there you go.
Well, I mean, if you look at Hostetler, there's a lot of dense development and a lot, I believe. To your point or your point, like with buildings right up on the edge and.
Well, we changed the setback in Hostetler to five feet.
But maybe it should, maybe it should really fit to what is there so you can rebuild what's there if you need to.
Which you should be able to do.
Downtown, right? If the building's gone, now all of a sudden you gotta do setbacks.
Yeah, two years. You have two years to rebuild it in kind.
And.
Downtown's interesting again because uh, let's say, like the fuel building is the building that I looked at, the building that fuel is in. If that building came down to the ground, it wasn't really going to you guys, you couldn't build the same building.
Wh- why?
Because of zoning.
Well, I mean, the the setbacks in the B zone are zero.
No, no, not because setback.
The lock coverage is seventy-five.
Because of height. The ground floor, for example, the ground floor, the ground floor, in the fuel, I think, it's likely twelve feet. And then you've got, yeah, I don't know, ten feet on the, on the two above there.
Oh, you mean the ceiling height, I see, I see, okay.
To over forty feet.
So instead of ten plus ten plus ten, it's twelve plus ten plus ten and some sort of parapet on the roof, yeah.
Okay, we have one more. What do we wanna do with this one?
Shared driveways for commercial. I think this might have been addressed with the V two X, right, on Route seven? And if we're thinking. Out Stockbridge Road, I don't know how far up Stockbridge Road this was originally intended to be.
I mean, there weren't any um curb cuts between adjacent commercial uses on Stockbridge Road.
How can you have a curb cut between adjacent commercial uses when there's no curb?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I mean. The only one where you could go between adjacent to um things was uh going from Theory Wellness to Mavis Tire before they put up. The barriers there on the parking lot.
Can somebody explain how a shared driveway will increase safety for bike and walk?
I think the idea is less, less driveway, so you're, you have to be aware of less driveways as you're going down the road or walking down the sidewalk.
Is that the logic?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, when I'm running, I'm looking both ways at every single driveway.
Intersection, right? When you're not skiing, three ways.
I think Jackie, we continue to keep this one on. It probably goes a little bit with Quality Streets, it's number one sixty.
Thank you. That works.
Wait, don't go. Oh, okay. I'll uh, I'll add live from your email then.
So that's all we have for this section.
That's it.
To consider. So this was really great. Actually, I, once, can I just thank everybody for. The reason to discuss these things again, but it's a good discussion because it goes, it's refreshing. And we jump away from just straight ahead votes, film, votes, and numbers.
Why not both, right?
It feels good. Now, do you want to um, when we plan for a later meeting to go back with everybody's outreach requirements? We could do that the next meeting?
Yes, um, can, what, how, how many committee reports do you have, like? For ten percent?
I have two.
You have two, okay.
I'm missing ninety-eight percent.
You have both of mine.
I have trees and I have.
I sent you, well, look at your email, I sent you conservation.
C O, C O A.
C O A.
Council on.
Yeah, I, I saw that, yeah.
I sent you my conservation report on Tuesday.
Oh, see, I didn't see Tuesdays. You mean, two days ago?
Yeah.
Oh, I haven't seen it. Okay, so we're a little better, so about seventy percent.
Okay.
I wrote mine.
Um, when?
Wasn't interested in the meeting, actually.
Our report for town meeting, Chris, what is the schedule on that?
Um, I drafted it and I'll send you out and review it at the next meeting.
Okay. I'd like to incorporate something related to the outreach effort for the master plan in, in.
Presentation.
Well, in the report to town meeting, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Just because it's a bigger audience to get that out.
Let them know, yeah.
Typically, the report to town meeting is just about the zoning articles. But you can talk about more if you want. You just said we did.
Yeah, come on.
We're taking you at your word there, Chris.
It's, it's, planning board is required to make a report on the law.
And may add something about master plan this.
Three minutes or less, is that the length that you're requiring?
I'm not sure, actually. All right, thank you, Jackie. I appreciate you continuing to stay on help with, right, and thanks, everybody. Good discussion. Um, so we'll do board and subcommittee updates, issues and concern, Jared?
It's, what is this in the um?
Wait, you gotta speak up.
Um, so where's the, it's, where's the discussion with the uh housing subcommittees next?
It's um listed here, so if you want to raise it, then.
Okay.
You, you're the champion of the housing sub, you want a planning board housing subcommittee?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not sure what's happening, but I don't think necessarily, so I don't, I'm not sure what's happening with the um. Uh select board, time board, joint housing subcommittee, um but I don't think that really matters. Um, I think we, with this, we could still have a separate uh planning board housing subcommittee. I mean, I thought some of the things that. I mean, one of the things I'm really interested in is um meeting with developers and other stakeholders to kind of find out. About housing and what's preventing housing development and then filtering that to what can attack, like planning board specifically. But also what other things on the town side can we change to help facilitate cost development? Um, and, you know, and we could also meet there with other town committees as well. Um, and one of the things, I mean, maybe if we were to set aside in this committee to talk about more broad things. Like Chris was saying, like meetings to, instead of specifically about zoning, um. Maybe we wouldn't have to there, but I thought in the housing subcommittee, we could have, we could have more broad discussions about housing. Because we kind of circulate a lot of articles and things um that have a lot of really interesting things in there. And but we don't ever get to kind of talk about them and then kind of distill them into things that we can actually take action on. Um, unless one of us individually brings it that way. And so I thought a housing subcommittee could be a good place for that.
So what would be your thought in terms of um like goals, objectives and output?
Well, I would think to, I mean, the, uh, I think the goal is to bring like actionable things to this board. And to this board to bring to other boards and committees.
But why, we already have the, the joint sub.
I know, but it's just not, I don't.
I don't think the joint.
I mean, frankly, like Lee's the driver behind it now, and I think that it's, it's gonna be difficult to. Like for her to be the driver of it now, just because of the things she has going on.
Can, can I ask, so do we, um, this is, I'm asking instead of the whole group here, do we think this needs to be a subcommittee or is this something?
I just, I just don't think we have the time in this committee. I mean, this board, to, I mean, we're busy as it is. Um, and if we're gonna start to have more broad discussions, like set aside meetings to have broad discussions, I think we have even less time. Um, I mean, we don't.
Is there another forum where this is happening, not from, at the county level in terms of?
Um, I mean, I, I wouldn't say, no, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think it is.
Like VRPC, do they have a housing?
Yeah, VRPC does a lot on housing, uh, you know, but it's um. Uh, it's specific to the town's requests or it's specific to grant opportunities.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I, I don't think it's gonna address things like uh zoning or what's out of, you know, things like that. We, that are specific to our town.
You know, what happened here from Jeremy, there's, I think, I, I don't think it's a bad idea and I, I. Don't know if a subcommittee is necessary, but maybe there could be two point people on this board. Who are bringing people in to talk to us about this stuff, right? Because I think we are maybe, I'm gonna say this and. Maybe get in trouble, but maybe we operate a little bit in a vacuum. Right? And so maybe having, if we have two point people to come in and, you know, bring in a, somebody who's a housing developer. Somebody who's, of course, running housing nonprofits, somebody who's just a citizen who's interested. Uh opposing views, you know, just have them come in and do sort of an interview, sort of information gathering, you know. Uh events so that we can, I think, be better informed about, I mean, we all know what's going on in the state and in the. Locally and nationally and the whole thing. Um, but, you know. I, I also, if you keep asking me, you know, I don't understand how housing doesn't get built in, in great part, or anywhere. There's such a great demand, what's helping it from being built, so.
Well, I mean, you know, we get these articles, uh, and I, I enjoy uh receiving articles, but I, I agree with Jeremy. I mean, uh, if, if we get articles, I mean, it would be nice if we carved out fifteen or twenty minutes in a meeting just to discuss.
That, I mean, that's why I'm asking you, meaning you're a subcommittee, because.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need a sub.
Yeah, I just wonder.
I think we need to.
I, I'm just curious if we have the time or if then if we have the capacity on this board to expand the time.
So my recollection, and somebody correct me if your recollection's different, but my recollection on why we formed the joint select board, planning board. Committee was because we were having those kind of conversations and we kept coming up against, like, that's not in our purview, that's not in our purview. Oh, okay, let's go talk with the select board about forming a joint committee so that things related to, you know. Taxing and uh other incentives that we don't control can be raised, um.
Right, you could still do that.
I don't think we need a subcommittee, I mean, not that I don't want you to have your own subcommittee, I.
No, I, I.
Subcommittee is, is clunky because you have to, it's, it's public, you have to, you have to.
Yeah.
Post your agenda and everything, whereas, and help me out here, Chris, it seems to me that if there are two volunteers.
Yeah.
That.
Then you can do it without a subcommittee.
Subcommittee and you could just meet over coffee.
Yeah, and we can, and.
And you can meet with other people and it's not.
And you can bring reports to the planning board for discussion, right? That's the thing, somebody needs to kind of present a topic. And then to, to the board for discussion.
I feel like each of us has like a particular area of like passion related to land use and housing and things like that. I mean, I don't. I, I think just raise whatever issue and let's get it on an agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we can.
We, we are already sharing so many articles.
Yeah.
Um, so I feel like there's a ton of information sharing.
Do we want to invite people in or not?
Sure, we certainly can, yeah. I mean, we've had for a number of months, we've taken it off recently, but we have had prior to this for a number of months, just an open housing discussion and we can certainly.
Because it's not, since I've been here, we haven't done.
No, that's not true at all.
Well, we have discussion, we just not bring people in. I mean, we have brought people.
Two people.
Yeah, we did, because we did tiny homes, we did.
Yeah.
We, we brought tiny homes in, we've had, uh.
No, when we were dealing co-living or.
Co-living, we had.
Workforce housing, that was really.
Right, and we also had, I'm blanking on his name, Nick Olson?
Sam Mickerson.
Nickerson, yeah.
That was on, so.
That was on just why development isn't working.
Oh, long to, oh, that's right, and then we saw him again, so.
Maybe all the meetings blend together for me and I don't have any sense of time. That's a possibility.
You know, we did, we did a couple of interviews when Jonathan and I were on subcommittee. I thought they were really interesting, you know, to hear from people doing it.
Yeah.
How it feel.
Jeff, Jeff Collins came in.
Jeff and Ian came in once and Sam came in, you know, the people who are doing it. It's interesting.
Yeah, and especially people that are now doing it in other towns. I mean, those are interesting too, like why not here?
But maybe, maybe we should reach out to like. Craig Barnum and, and Ian.
Right, but you know, we can reach out, right? But we need to have a sort of agenda.
Yeah.
What do we wanna ask and what do they wanna talk about?
I mean, we could do, we can do.
That's, that's.
That's planning in advance and that can be.
Right, so like.
We could do it, the informal, formal version.
What I would suggest is if there's something you wanna know, let's send, you know, me and Pedro and Chris an email that says. I am really curious about this particular aspect and then we can figure out who, okay, you know, maybe a range of people, like a little panel discussion of. People who can present various viewpoints and we can add that to an agenda. I, I think that's a great idea. And I'd rather do it here where we have, you know, more people who can appreciate it.
And it would be open to.
Open to whoever wants to participate. Maybe we can have more outreach and say. Open to whoever wants to participate. Maybe we can have more outreach and say, you know, hey, this is agriculture adjacent discussion, you know, as committee if you want.
This one we were talking about with master plan, I mean, that kind of forum for that, yeah. I mean, we came up with a couple of them at least, right? Where we can do that here.
Yeah. Okay, cool. So you're okay that we're.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, no, yeah.
All right, I appreciate you raising that. All right. Uh, anything else? Yeah, okay, Malcolm, anything? No, Jackie?
I'm fine, thanks.
Jonathan?
Well.
Pedro? Oh my gosh. Okay, I have two things. So, um, one is that we received, um, a request from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to look at mobile homes. As like, why are they seemingly?
Excluded.
Yeah. Is there an, is there an equity issue there? So, um, I reached back out to Fred.
Uh, is it mobile homes or trailer homes? I thought the.
That's the same thing.
Yeah, tiny houses with wheels?
No.
No, these are.
So it.
Okay, that's just helped me understand that, you know.
No.
Really talking about measurement, yeah?
They're talking about trailers.
So, well, well.
They're talking about trailer parks.
I can't find the letter in my, yeah, I can't, I was looking for it. You sent it to me, right?
And now it's a big deal because they're raising the rent following.
Thank you. Uh, okay, so I, I'll read it relatively. So from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, um, so I'll paraphrase. So they, um, looked at the definition of, in 8.6 of trailers are mobile homes, uh, which is defined as, oh no, that's not, um, defined as a detached dwelling unit with substantially the following criteria, um, meeting the American Standard Association Cobra Vision A1191, containing at least 500 feet of living area, installing conformist with the building code, um, designed for long-term occupancy, meaning having sleeping accommodations, flushing toilet, tub, shower, kitchen facilities with plumbing and electrical connections to outside systems, being designed to be transported after fabrication on its own wheels, arriving at the site as a complete dwelling, including major appliances and furniture? That was actually.
I think the difference is.
So, so what?
It's one trailer versus movable, right?
Wait, I'm trying to read the Affordable Housing Trust Fund's letter. We ask that you look into whether these rules are necessary and desirable in light of, one, the current housing crisis and the goal of creating housing through the addition of accessory dwelling units to existing lots, two, the rules permitting movable tiny houses less than 400 square feet, but share many of the same characteristics of mobile homes, three, the apparent support in the bylaw for prefabricated modular homes in more than one piece, but not for mobile homes, um, in one prefabricated piece, four, the possibility outdated perceptions of manufactured home quality that may influence the introduction of these rules, and five, the possible socioeconomic biases that may have influenced the introduction of these rules. So, um, I have asked Fred Clark, the chair, if he or someone from Affordable Housing Trust Fund would do two things. We'll circulate out this letter to everybody, but if they would also send us the minutes from the meetings where they had this discussion to kind of arrive at sending us this letter, and then if they would, um, get us that for background information and then come and engage us at a future meeting. So I don't know when that will be yet, but just start thinking about that and.
This is nimbey, babe.
Yeah.
Well, but it's a very, it is a very interesting discussion because when you're talking about like clustering, so doing like a purr, if you were doing a purr with very small houses, it could look exactly like this and you couldn't do it. Right? So like the, the unit could come on one trailer and put it down in like a cluster fashion.
Thing that I have, the problem that I have with that letter is that to me, a mobile home is something that can then be moved somewhere else, on its own wheels.
They don't, they don't have foundations.
What our definition has for a mobile home is something that's on a foundation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's attached.
Right.
Yeah, and that's the.
That's not mobile.
Because, because they're often on a pad but not on a foundation. Is that the difference? It's not some kind of.
They have to be, I mean, people do put them on pads, which is totally silly, but.
Yeah.
We put one pad, they put skirts around them.
They put skirts around them, a lot of those, like stairs up to them, but no basement.
So, um, so we want that to be on, um, a future meeting, kind of subject to when they can get the minutes to us and.
So do you, do you get the sense though that they're conflating trailers with mobile home?
I, I don't want to, um, presume anything. That's why I was asking for the background information, if they could come and explain it to us so that we have the context correctly and then we'll just see.
I think they're identical. What's the, what do you mean conflate? How are they different?
Because a trailer is on a trailer, it's always on wheels.
Yeah.
Mobile home, like we just said, gets, by per our definition, gets installed onto something into the ground. It's attached to the ground and then is no longer mobile. It's funny, one of our longest definitions. Sorry?
It's that, then it wouldn't be a trailer.
Yeah, I, I think, I just wanted to raise that as we'll put it on this, but yes, let's start our wheels turning on them.
I was, the only reason I bring it up is I was at that meeting. It was the meeting that Bill Cook presented his project there.
The other thing I, I spoke.
So, uh, the difference differences with mobile tiny houses, they have to conform to the, to the, that code.
Their RV.
Their own code and, uh, trailers or mobile homes have to do the same, have to do the same thing.
Right, but our definition says it has to conform to the, to the RV code, but then also to the building code.
Right.
Yeah, so once it's conformed to the building code, it's, you know, it's a dwelling. It's no longer a trailer or.
It may just be that we need an exchange of information.
Could, could a trailer conform to building? I don't think so.
I'm sure you could. I think you could, except that you have to be, no, you can't.
We're all, we're all, wait, no, no.
Oh, I have one, oh, I have one question.
No, no, this is my issue or concern. I'm sharing it with you. It's going to be on a future agenda.
I just have a quick little question. Is with trailer parks, Chris, versus subdivisions, the road requirements aren't the same, right?
This road's.
Jeremy, I don't know, I'm not prepared to discuss this topic. It just came up. It's not on the agenda.
It's my issue or concern. The, the other issue that's come up just this week is that we've been contacted by, uh, Ms. Lamato, who is the new chair of the Hushtonic Improvement Committee, and maybe, do you know anything about Cook's Garage? Like, they are asking for our opportunity to have us have a joint meeting, um, to discuss Cook's Garage and.
We should have a site visit.
We could.
What about it? What, what, what do we have?
We, the town owns it now, I think.
Right.
Right, yeah, but what, how is this any more issue?
If it's, if we.
Just address what Randy's question is, please, and not get off.
So, so we would like to, um, schedule that. Um, their meetings are the same night as our meetings. I don't know if they're earlier or not, but, um, so are we okay with setting up a joint meeting and maybe we'll do a field visit and.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. So I'm trying to get a little more information.
I'm just really understanding what the purpose of the meeting would be.
We'll, I guess we'll let you know. I have not heard about this, so.
Oh, you haven't?
More information to come.
I hardly ever know anything first, so.
I know, I know what the, what the site is. I don't know what the email is, ROI, so.
Yeah.
Great, we'll get you more information.
All right, more to come. Okay, I hesitate to ask if there's anything else. Any citizens speak?
Can I just make a comment? Michelle DeBayer, 70 Division Street, like, you're talking about the Hushtonic Improvement Committee, and I always watch their agendas, they're so vague. They have a template agenda they publish every time, but if they're going to do something like Husk Garage, your agendas are very specific. So any reader can say, oh, Cook's Garage, I'm interested.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, if you're going to be communicating with the Hushtonic Improvement Committee, or I can, tell them to be a bit more specific because that would be a topic of interest for Hushtonic residents.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
And I appreciate that.
And if we do it, it's a joint meeting because of scheduling, it'll be on our agenda too, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
So we'll get it right.
Yeah. Well, we'd set a good model for other cities. Okay, thank you. Anything for you? No? Okay, great. Yes, oh, we have one.
Eileen.
Hi, Eileen.
You're muted.
Hey. Okay. All right. The HIC agenda tonight did have Cook's Garage, um, because that's why I went to its meeting, which was a 6:30. And they had written the planning board, but no one was at their meeting, so they left the topic sort of untouched. Angela wasn't at the meeting. Um, and I was curious as to what the planning board was going to consider about Cooks.
And so you jumped onto this meeting. As quickly as you could. So, um, hold on one second and I can be more specific. Um, Angela, uh, contacted the, the chairwoman, Angela Monto.
Yeah.
Contact, can you hear me?
Uh-huh.
So she contacted me on the 8th by email and just said that they are doing some initial, um, review of Cook's Garage development potential. And could me or the whole planning board come to one of their meetings to discuss? And, and that was sort of open-ended enough that I asked her just what their goals and objectives would be and how the planning board could be helpful and supportive. So she emailed me back, uh, maybe like, I don't know, an hour, two hours ago. Um, and she says, she wants to know if the planning board has a vision for Cook's Garage and what the possibilities are given the zoning. Um, and so, uh, we'll look to schedule maybe a joint meeting with them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
It's in the overlay district, right?
But it's, it's hard for people that aren't familiar with it to really figure it out, I think. Does that help, Eileen?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's one of the normal.
All right.
Conversations, right? Like figuring out what you can do.
Yeah, that's a big question. So we'll adjourn at 8:02.
Thank you.
Thank you.